So I see here we've got the budget lead, so we don't have a roll call for our board members.
Really?
Yeah, so we'll start by Director Shover.
Here.
Director Barabou.
Here.
Director Sorkin.
Yes.
Director Lager.
Here.
Director Tomar.
Here.
Director Irden.
Here.
Director Mannanen.
Here.
Director Anderson.
Here.
Director Yuhan. Director Yuhan. Director Yuhan, consider Director Gunn absent and Director Addy is here. And Director Sunquist is also not here. Consider additions and deletions to the agenda. Do you have any? Okay, very good. Number four, recognition of the visitors and public comments regarding the meeting agenda. I do believe there were some people that wanted to speak tonight. Am I not correct? Was there public input?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Here, let me quick. Okay, here, I'll start. Okay. Okay, can you hear me? Okay, so here's my public comment. I'll try and make it. It's a lot of different topics. Can you hear me okay, everybody?
Yes.
Okay, so the first thing is, is that I'm unhappy, I guess, that there's no plans or discussion for the state three scenarios for the kids going back to school as many other school boards I've heard about in the news have different scenarios for the plans. And I think that the school board should start looking into that because it's difficult to know how parents should be getting their ready, getting their kids ready for school in regards to buying school supplies and/or if they're going to be distance learning, you know, making sure that they have resources for that, including childcare and things like that. And I apologize, my kids are, my input on the background. And then also, the one other note on that is the Evelyn Gilbert pre-K list isn't at target. All the other lists are there for school supplies. And then second comment is that providing a change order, this is regards to one of the agendas later on, of 175,000, powers intended, I think, should only be 25,000 because otherwise the money could disappear. That's not being monitored. And then I also feel that the, all the time is being spent with the consolidation that it's moving way too fast and not being spent on the changes regarding distance learning for the students. And then I also think that what's going on with E-Rats, as they're a school too, and the students have now, have all this uncertainty, is also, I guess, not right. And then the public, and then the other, another thing is that the public, when the consolidation was occurring, stated that we're gonna find, they were gonna wait two years to find buyer of the school buildings. And in the last meeting minutes where I saw that it had about where you're already looking to demolish the buildings, and I haven't even seen a price or if buyers were even sought after for the school buildings. Next, I'm wondering about repurposing the lockers, gym floors, schools, desks, tables, office supplies that are in the bid packet to, or out for bid. You could put those items on hold if you are truly gonna demo the buildings and do not find buyers, that those could be reutilized and save some money on the costs since we're already at the cost. And then, and then also, in regards to the policies, I'd like to see both the policies, so the current policies of Evelyn Gilbert and Virginia, we bolded and highlighted differences in the most recent policy instead of just the new one, because it's difficult to determine the changes between the two. And so, and it takes a lot of time to look at those changes as an individual or for the board members. Next, there are issues that I've had different rumors with, and I guess in regards to, and I kind of want to get that clarified, with the positions of head coaches and overlap between the schools, that there should be rehiring just in one school district, such as going towards Virginia with the favor of that. Or, and the board gave, I think, at the last meeting or recently, the authority for the superintendent dissolve programs or teachers with overlap, and that power should stay with the school board, since the, that's an important thing because the different programs may have certain niches in Evelyn Gilbert that may not be in Virginia, and those programs may still be important, may not have the enrollment there may be needs otherwise, which the superintendent may not, may not be aware of as he's starting to familiarize himself with the Evelyn Gilbert community. There's also, I have issues with the fact that the Evelyn Gilbert Elementary School was bid out before even the consolidation vote, and the bids were open before the consolidation vote. And then I also have issues with the design of the elementary school that does not have a library, and that this could be fixed by moving around, by moving around the learning communities and allowing so that it, the learning communities are all in one area and then creating that library space, because the logistics, after talking with the superintendent this past week, logistics of moving books and just the logistics of having that is gonna take a lot of time away from what that person that would be responsible for those books in the media center currently does and provides the role, the, what they provide for the students is taken away. And that would only take 3,500 square feet for that, and I'm not sure what the learning spaces currently are. The fact that there's no multipurpose room, which currently Evelyn Gilbert has the 4,500 square foot multipurpose room, that isn't in there at all, as well as auditorium, which would be 9,000 square feet or 2,500 square feet. And the fact that there's no bear care room, this is really important, as in childcare, everybody knows that this is a main issue. You know, there's a lot of funding put towards the childcare and the new childcare center that just opened up, and that bear care allows parents, if they have more than one student, to have their child there from six o'clock in the morning until when the school is, and they pay for it, and then also from 6:00 PM. And this can't share a room. There are separate resources. As it is, teachers won't allow you in their, in their, to meet with you or even go in their rooms usually, at least the experiences that I've had before the school days, so you can't really put it in another room. Another problem that I have is that advisory meetings, like, weren't open to the public, and that's where most of the design.
Amanda?
The design occurred. And then, what's that?
Uh, does you, you, everybody's granted two minutes during visitor input. I hate to be, you know, you're granted two minutes.
Oh, can I? Okay, I just have one more. I have one more point.
Okay, go ahead.
The last point that I have is I have a resolution that I'd like, let's see if I can share it here, share screen, a resolution, I'm not sure if I know how to do this, where it basically is saying that for the board to consider how much it needs to focus on creating the plans. Can you guys see this? Whereas the school board needs to focus on creating plans and how the school reopen, and basically the, and because of the pandemic and coronavirus, and there isn't land ownerships and the, there's state budget cuts, and that the taxpayer shouldn't be paying if the, if the state doesn't have the 5.5 million per year, how much 4% of the foundation budget that therefore being all the school construction projects, any more consolidation projects, be stopped for at least two years due to coronavirus pandemic and budget uncertainties in order to focus all resources for teacher, teacher staff, students, the community, on teaching students and meeting students' basic needs during the pandemic. And I guess that's a resolution of the board to consider.
Can you, can you, can you get all that information to the superintendent or send it out to the, to Stacy, the board chair, of all the, all the information you just wanted to share with us? Because we got, we got a barrage of questions from you. I didn't even write them down. Did anybody write them all down? How did? So, I mean, it would be, it'd be best if you, all your concerns, could you send those in, in emails to Stacy so we can look at all them, those, those issues individually as a board?
Okay, so it'll, yeah.
But then?
Here, here, one, one second, what's that?
I just say, can you, can you email all those, all that information to Stacy, the board chair in regards to, because you, you gave us a barrage of questions. And I don't think anybody can pull it out.
Okay, yep, I can do that. So, like I said, there's a lot of concerns that I have that are kind of unanswered, so.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Uh.
I have another one I would email in regarding policy we're about to pass.
Okay. So you can speak to it if you'd like.
I didn't. So, it's just one.
I can't read this. Because I don't have my reading glasses. Those are from Pat, and they don't work. Mr. Murray, would you like to, Director Murray, Anderson, would you like to read that for me? I know.
This comment is in regards to proposed medication policy on tonight's agenda. I would like to respectfully ask you to reconsider perhaps delay approval of the proposed medication policy. I am a retired licensed school nurse who spent 25 years working in schools in seven, in the form of Virginia Public Schools. We have chosen to use the MSBA student medication policy, which is a good template, but I believe contains flaws. The Minnesota Board of Nursing is the licensing agency for nurses in Minnesota, and in order to be licensed by the Board of Teaching, or whatever the current name of this group is, a nurse must first be licensed by the Board of Nursing. Board of Nursing does not permit registered nurses or LPMs to administer medication without an order from a Minnesota licensed medicate, medication prescriber. By proposed policy addresses prescription medication and the need for an order, it does not address the need for an order over the counter medication if a licensed nurse administers it. In the eyes of the Board of Nursing, an over the counter medication is still medication and therefore requires an order from a licensed prescriber. To illustrate how this work, works, I would suggest you consider that when a person is in acute care such settings such as a hospital, the nurse will not be able to give them a Tylenol without an order. To comply with Board of Nursing licensure requirements, it is necessary for licensed nurses in the school also setting to also have an order from a licensed prescriber. To administer over the counter medications without an order from the prescriber is a violation of the Nurse Practice Act. A nurse could be subject to discipline from the licensing board, and the district would open itself to liability issues. This topic of over the counter medication has been widely discussed by school nurses and at one time was reviewed by the Minnesota Attorney General. The legislature enacted a law regarding over the counter medication, but did not consider the Nurse Practice Act when doing so. I believe the Virginia School District historically gave these over the counter medications without an order from a prescri, licensed prescriber. When I filled in for long-term substitute position in Evelyn Gilbert, the school district passed all, one of my first priorities was to update this practice in that district to protect them, protect both the nursing staff and the district. I would respectfully ask that you reconsider this portion of your policy. It can be accomplished by simply substituting the word "all" medication, or the prescription medication appears in the text. You may have concerns about the ability of your nursing staff to obtain these orders over the count, or over the counter medications. However, my professional experience is that licensed prescribers understand their responsibility in regards to this and endless day of electronic communication, especially via facts, these orders are not difficult to obtain. Although an occasional parent will object, it is not difficult for the nursing staff to explain the reasons, the reason the order is needed, and my experience is that it is not difficult to change the school culture regarding. I would suggest that students have the over the counter medications freely available for your school setting is not the safest or healthiest practice. I have further concerns about specific exemptions, exception in the proposed policy. Exception number one allows for procedures to be done by a nurse without an order from a licensed prescriber. It is my professional opinion that nurses do not do tracheus, tracheus suctioning, catheterizations and gastro, gastro scope feedings without an order from a licensed prescriber. Exception four allows a minor to consent for medication at school if the minor can legally consent for it in the healthcare setting. I would ask that you carefully reconsider this. If a minor is seeking gender reassignment and medication is involved, ask yourself if you would want to administer, want this administered at school without consent of a parent. Ask yourself a similar question about medications used to treat sexually transmitted diseases and mental health concerns. Exception five regarding inhalers omit the need for an order from a licensed prescriber in addition to parent permission. Exception seven allows over the counter, counter pain medications in high school with parent permission for reasons stated earlier, I believe this is not the safest practice. Over the counter medication, pain medications can be abused and cause serious organ damage. They can also be used indiscriminately by students and may ask or delay diagnosis and treatment of a serious underlying health condition. Lastly, they can be shared among students. While I am not naive enough to think that having an order from the prescriber will prevent students from having over the counter medications available in first lockers, backpacks, I would suggest that you create a much safer environment by asking the prescriber order be in place and allows them to carry and itself administer the medication. This allows your nursing staff to check bases periodically with these students regarding their medication use and underlying health concerns. Exception eight, although epinephrine is in the form of an epi pen can be made available in schools without prescription according to the legislature, I would again refer to the Board of Nursing licensure requirement that a nurse needs to, needs an order from a prescriber for this. I would further ask that you consider how many epi pens would be required to be available at your schools. What is the decision tree for where these epi pens are located? If three classes leave the building for field trips, which class picks the epi pen? Who will pay for these epi pens and how many are needed? Keep in mind, Virginia ambulance is licensed to administer epi pens in the event of an allergic reaction that results in an emergency. As you are now aware, I have deep and sincere concerns about policy proposed, the Minnesota Department of Health employs a school nurse consultant. I believe that that person would be able to assist you. If you desire further information about my concerns, you could also certainly contact the Board of Nursing with regards to the need for orders from a licensed prescriber. This got very lengthy, and I am, so that I apologize. Thank you for taking time to listen. Mary spring.
And thank you, Director Anderson. So, I guess, yeah, maybe we'll consider looking into that policy when it comes around and tweaking that in the, at the policy committee meeting and then getting board approval to make that change to improve.
Could you bring your, so they have pens and an MSBA, I don't know, man.
Then, you know, Mary has been in schools up here for many years, and we should get MSBA's reaction to it also.
Is it all, then, all?
Well, just to include all, all prescription medicine is what you're saying, right? Or all?
And over the counter.
And over the counter. I think that's how the Evelyn Gilbert Board had it, to include all medicine and over the counter, am I right? Correct, Randy?
I'm not sure about the over the counter. I think over the counter, parents can sign a form, giving permission.
So, so you have three kids, they class, one of them has three epi pens. You don't have nurses that administer it, right?
Anybody.
Anybody, most kids that need an epi pen, they have their own.
When you need an epi pen, you don't have time to call emergency services. Same, same with albuterol and inhalers, you can't.
But isn't there, when they go on a filter, isn't there a medical list set up that goes with it?
There should be.
You know, like when they go to any football, if they need special attention, or, you know, don't, no penicillin or no whatever, you know? I think the.
Right, yeah.
Okay. This is something we need to look at, I guess. Any more visitor input, public comments regarding the agenda?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
My name is Melissa. I am a parent and a taxpayer in the district, and I've heard of, yes?
Melissa, can you keep, keep your comments to, or keep your comments to two minutes?
A minute? I will try.
Two minutes?
Thank you. I bet I can do it under. I have heard of the recent court decision by Judge Friday to essentially evict E-Rats out of their location by the end of August, and I would just like to ask the board to consider giving them more time. I do believe that we need to be the good that we teach our children, our students, and our community, and I think by extending the timeframe to allow E-Rats to find a suitable location, we could do that, and I thank you for your time.
I think that it's the board's intention and the, to, to, yeah, to help the movement, help the transition smoothly out of this building and then possibly into the new building. Okay.
Thank you.
Any more public comment? We have a Kathy in here, I'm not sure if she's in. Kathy? Okay, moving along. Number five, item number five, consider consent agenda. Number one, approve the minutes of July 13, 2020, and approve the resignation of John Reimer from the Position Master Plumber effective July 1. Need a motion to approve?
I'm moved to approve with one correction, on the July 13. And I would just like it to be added, approve the resignation of Tom General. Just add that we don't need to discuss, put it in the record, send him a board, I mean, a letter of appreciation. I know, I know here, I just like it, like, minutes, we can talk about it now.
Okay, all right. I'll be considered, can I get a second?
So.
That's my Director Anderson. Do we, on here, we don't need a roll call vote, correct? We do not? We do? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item six, administrative items. Consider, joint, request certification for executive representative. Consider resolution authorizing the school district superintendent to approve change orders up to $175,000. Consider amended joint powers agreement relating to ISD 6076 Northland Learning Center. Consider approval of the tenure LTFM plan. Consider Gilbert Elementary Bid Pack number two. Consider Rock Ridge High School Bid Pack number one. Replace in the bus garage, bid results and letter of recommendation. Timeline for upcoming new El, Virginia Elementary School project, number nine. Consider Rock Ridge High School member, Rock Ridge High School Board Member Committee roster 2020. Number 10, consider a procedure to fill the vacant board member's seat.
We take these up at a time.
Yeah.
Individually, right?
Yes, yeah. So you're doing it differently. Consent agenda. Okay, number one, consider joint sector request, request for certification of exclusive representatives. Moved by who? Director Mannanen, support by Director Mott. Um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consider.
I think.
I think those have.
The rest does, just not the agenda, consent agenda.
Okay, so we'll do roll call vote. Who's going to keep track of? Huh? Who's clerk?
The, 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 the,[1782.16]
Item three, consider amended joint powers agreement relating to Independence School District six, six to zero, seven, six, Northland Learning Center. Need a motion to.
Make that motion.
Support.
Miles, supported by Director. Bearable, any discussion?
There's another question. Is this the same, um, the same agreement, just for giving lots of work done?
Yeah, no, just, just changing.
Just changing the names. Okay, any more discussion? I get a roll call vote, please.
Director Tamperill.
Aye.
Director Ri-.
Aye.
Director Lotiger.
Aye.
Director Sorkin.
Yes.
Director Addy.
Aye.
Director Bearable.
Aye.
Director Shober, aye. Director Anderson.
Aye.
Director Mannanen.
Aye.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Okay, item four, consider approval of the tenure long-term facilities management plan. Get a motion to approve that.
So.
My Director Anderson.
Aye.
Support by Director Tamperill. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just have a comment, I think, and maybe some questions, but. I don't think it's that important input for budget finance committee, it's been, it's been, um, and certain things are not, this thing is still a full story. I mean, like, day, day one, we're just, like, thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars in year twenty twenty. I think I just want to know more, what's the quote, what's the report, what's the open period again, and what's the distance? Again, I, I expressed my feelings before, about how important it is for the board to have input in understanding in, um, a bunch of finance things. This is one of, um, the one of the markets. I would just like to have more, more detail of that, other than just, um, category, and how, how these numbers were.
And, and I don't disagree that we should have more detail, but my understanding that we do need to have this approved, um, by July thirty first and, um, that, uh, uh, facility committee will be looking at this to amend it and risk and change it moving forward as needed.
Any more discussion on item four? I get a roll call vote, please.
Uh, Director Ri-.
Aye.
Director Lotiger.
Aye.
Director Sorkin.
Yes.
Director Addy.
Yes.
Director Bearable.
Aye.
Director Shober, aye. Director Anderson.
Aye.
Director Mannanen.
Aye.
Director Tamperill.
Aye.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Item number five, consider El Gilbert Elementary Bid Pack number two. Can I get a motion?
Or, I need motion.
My Director Lotiger, support by, support by Director Addy. Any discussion? I'm being had, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Director Lotiger.
Aye.
Director Sorkin. Director Addy.
Yes.
Director Bearable.
Aye.
Director Shober, aye. Director Anderson.
Aye.
Director Man- Mannanen.
Aye.
Director Tamperill.
Aye.
Director Ri-.
Aye.
Uh, motion passes eight to zero as long as that.
Item number six, consider Rockbridge High School Bid Pack number one. Can I get a motion to approve that?
Don't move Ri- Ri- moved by Ri-.
Aye.
Or by Tamperill. Any discussion? I'm being had, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Uh, Director Sorkin. Director Addy.
Yes.
Director Bearable.
Aye.
Director Shober, aye. Director Anderson.
Aye.
Director Mannanen.
Aye.
Director Tamperill.
Aye.
Director Ri-.
Aye.
Director Lotiger.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero as long as that.
Item number seven, replace bus garage, bid results from the letter of recommendation. Can I get a motion to approve that? Clerk, my Director Tamperill, support by Director Lotiger. Any discussion?
Yes. I don't think, now that ERAS are moving on here as of August thirty first, with everything that's happened with Facebook, what's going on, I think we should make some options, if they stay until January first of two thousand twenty-one, if they give up the bus garage tomorrow. And at that point, I still think it's worth moving it to build a new one. Every school in the nation builds, there's no room for storage. We're never gonna have this opportunity again.
I agree that that building is a, building could be moved, you know, and I think, I don't know. Superintendent Schmidt, do you have any comments on that in regards to, or would Mitch or Trevor have any comments of, you look into possibly, I would say, quote unquote, cutting a deal if they stay there, stay there till twenty, January first, twenty twenty-one and?
Well, uh, compliment, this is, uh, confidence is not as simple as what it appears on the surface. I would recommend you do not agree to do anything tonight because, uh, other than accept, uh, the proposal for you, as far as what you're moving, when you're moving, and that we have time to figure out. That's, that is how, how that's like the ERAS. ERAS currently is renting the facility. They do have a lease for that. I do not recommend right now doing anything to move them out of that building. They currently are in the lease. Please do not attempt to change that right now. Um, I know there was a ruling on Friday, uh, by the judge. Um, I believe there could be a meeting, um, with ERAS to discuss possibilities. I think at this point in time, it's probably best to leave it at that, um, and to let this discussion take place and see what happens. And then I believe, uh, garage will circle back. However, keep in mind that, um, the board has already approved the building of another garage down by the Lower Softball Field. It is here, it showed up, it is not available since it was sent back, um, with thirty, it's in thirty days. So you do have another shed here, um, and it's plotted out. And the reality is ERAS still is there. We are honoring the terms of the lease. We cannot do anything with that shed. Um, as long as ERAS is renting the facility. And so I would suggest waiting, let's have an opportunity to have a conversation and see what goes, and then we will bring that back to the board, um, for their consideration.
So you say to, um, table this, this for the design.
I think we should table this item and tell.
Do you need, that, probably, do you need this specific bid for approved at this meeting?
We do, so that we have a place to put the building that's already delivered. Regardless of whether you're going to use it for storage down at the athletic area, that's why it was cited down there, so you would have storage. If you still decide at a later date that you wanna move the Morton Building and have another building, we can still do that. But we have to have this so we can get a slab underneath it, so we can get that building off of White Cedar Drive and get it erected. Otherwise, parts start getting lost and just damaged is not a good thing.
We have, we have a building delivered, or we have?
No, the, uh, the original board, uh, Joint Powers Board approved the buying of the building quite some time ago. But we didn't have all of the quotes and everything in at the time. It was, uh, a lump sum dollar amount. So we're providing that so you have that visibility here. So this is the building that is on the site down below, and it was ordered off from the approval from the Joint Powers Board.
I'm, I'm sure if I own a computer, it did come after, after approval or something, and it's already delivered, it must have been after.
It was, it was a budget number because of the litigation that was going on with the ERAS situation. And the budget number had to be approved so we could move forward. So in good faith, you could say to the judge, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Smith, say that you were moving forward with a building to replace the bus garage, so that you were able to continue on with the process on the legal side. So we had a budget number, and now these are individual prices that are within that budget number that was previously approved.
It came in under the, the budget number, correct?
Um, the portions that you have here are underneath.
Yes.
There are some that we're doing change orders for, uh, the elementary school, and we'll bring those to you at a later date.
So which one of these, um, is this delivered, the?
The New Core Building? That is, that is the metal building that just arrived today. And we have to order that. If you hadn't ordered that, you would not have been showing the good faith of the courts that you were going to build a replacement building for ERAS. And there were legal implications of that.
Somehow or other, New Core was authorized to deliver a building in Houston, Atlanta, for a whole activity, like.
Peter Smith is the mechanic.
If the same concept is to approve buildings for high school, but all the details were there, you had a dollar amount, now you're approving some of this. It's the same type of concept. I guess what you're better off thinking is it's two completely separate transactions. It's strange, I know, um, this is where we are at, and they're two completely separate transactions. You've already approved the building of the new building down by the Softball Field. Depending what happens, the only issue will be what happens with Congress brought up, what you do with the Morton Building. But I'm telling you, strongly advising you, please do not do anything with that Morton Building. Until we have a resolution for, that's fact, is, the truth of this, history is lost here, and we got built in two. If, if it all pans out, so.
We would have to, they're getting more limited down there because remember, we're working front.
You don't live.
Um, it would not have to be down there.
I mean, we have a, we have a.
Could be.
Field deal, we have.
Could be right out back up here. There are other locations that you could relocate it to. The issue being, it really needs to be gone about the fourth of September, or it starts holding up the high school construction.
Well, that gives, that gives, uh, if, that's something we approved doing, even if we couldn't get it over the moon until September first, we'd have to.
I think that's what Dr. Smith is saying, let's, let's keep going forward with the New Core Building. Kind of think of that as, that could be additional storage for you above and beyond the Morton Building. But it's something you have to do for the legal portion of what's going on with ERAS. And that's what we're asking for approval on. And you're right, you do have some more time to decide what you're going to do at the next board meeting with the ERAS. So I think you have more visibility by then if you have that discussion with ERAS.
I mean, so, but, you asked my question, at least I know there's another spot that it could be.
Mm-hmm. There's some spots on the north side of this building that would actually.
I mean, to repurpose that old, that would, would suit be the old bus garage as a kind of basis of concern.
Yeah.
You know, why would you wanna, you know, let's try to repurpose that building for our own use.
Yep, the biggest issue is the timing, because ERAS, the issue has gone on here, that, so just so you understand. There's rock underneath that building that has to be blasted. We can't put new footings in the ground and then be blasting down near it because that green concrete will crack. So basically, until that building's gone, we can't put footings in on your new high school. And every day we don't do that, you get into more winter conditions. So that's the timing thing, but it is still possible, if somebody can move it quite rapidly, it is still possible.
So then we should be, we should be looking into a mover that can work on a very short timeline, possibly if needed.
Mm-hmm. If they move out on the thirty first, unless you extend them, then, uh, I would hope you wouldn't extend the bus garage.
No, no, because you'd be building, you'd be building that other one already.
Right, but we wouldn't be done by thirty-one hours and, uh. If they move out on the thirty first, they have, what, five days to remove the building from the path. And if they could do that in that time, we would be fine with that.
So then, so well, who would be responsible for contacting a mover if it needs you to move in a short timeline?
Uh, it would take care of that, uh, but please don't turn.
Right, no, no.
Um.
Right, we, we get it.
Down the road.
Yeah.
We already, and I'm, no, we could probably take it down.
Okay. So that was item number seven. We have a motion by.
I, I have another question. Did we have other bidders on these, uh, portions, that materials, mechanical, electrical?
They're all listed. Yes, they're on the list. Over to them, right, the second bidder, with the.
We only had two, no, uh, two, three?
Two for the building, that's correct.
And then, what do you estimate the annual replacement of bus garage, estimated, we need to make.
Um, it will be done, see, if we get this approval tonight, by one October.
Well, what, um, there's one thing, a few sponsors, they're like a timeline, and a few, and then another, that's the case.
Yeah, uh, that will depend upon what ERAS decided to do, um, and I don't know that they're going to do that. Their decision, I believe they have fifteen days.
Okay, that's, that's a question. That's, that's about two months, that should happen when the project is, trying to resolve it. Maybe, A or may not be this extra garage, I know you're saying you could always use it, but if it's going to be for our use in the future, we might build it differently than if we're building it now. And to add on to things we might just, we would wanna make it a full.
That's, that's one question I did want members of the board to know, that as this building was being designed, we were clearly talking and thinking about that, what would happen at some point to leave this up, and where we would leave the whole building. So building is designed with Rockbridge District long-term, designing, how it's designed, how it's drained, everything was designed. And we, I know you had spent hours on this, I spent hours talking to you about designing this building for long-term use. So, I was very, it's like, we are building, we have a patternized, and the design at this point, because of the legal events, we're thinking, you have to approve them so we know where to begin to go on building.
Now, we're discussing that, uh, during policy meeting, well, we approved it also. Exactly.
Any more discussion on item seven? Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Certainly, uh, Director Addy.
Yes.
Director Bearable.
Yes.
Director Shober, DS, Director Anderson.
Aye.
Director Mannanen.
No.
Director Tamperill.
No.
Director Ri-.
Yes.
Director Lotiger.
Yes.
And Director Sorkin.
No.
Motion passes, uh, six ayes and three noes.
Okay, item number eight, timeline for upcoming new Virginia Elementary School project. That's just a presentation, correct?
Yeah, uh, members of the school board, I believe we have come from Cunningham Group online.
Yeah. Hi, this is Kristen Nelson, calling in from Cunningham Group. Thanks for having me. Um, are you all looking at a screen? Should I share the schedule or do you have copies with you?
Yes, Kristen, go ahead and share your screen, it, it'll pop up on the television.
Okay, one moment. Okay, so you should be looking at a, uh, something that looks like it came out of Excel spreadsheets, correct?
Yeah, we're gonna see if we can make it a little larger on our side.
And I can do some zooming to help that, too.
I think you have to do some zooming.
Okay, is it a little better?
A little bigger.
Okay.
If you can. Give us one second, Kristen, we're trying the slightest, there we go.
Sure.
Now we're good.
Okay, great. Um, so, uh, I'm gonna zoom back out for just one moment, so you can just get the full view of what we'll take a look at today. And what you can see here, and this is a, this is what we're calling a draft schedule at this point in time, is we, um, start to plan how, um, the, this project will come together. And as you can see, here we are in twenty twenty, and this schedule actually spans, uh, through, if it can show up here in one moment. Um. Twenty twenty-four, and, um, what, what you're seeing here is, you know, we've, we've got a lot of momentum and a lot of planning efforts that have been happening in the past couple of years together on the first elementary school and the high school. And so what's being planned for Virginia Elementary is to take all that work that, that ever. And so what's being planned for Virginia Elementary is to take all that work that, that everyone's done together and keep the momentum going and kick off that design process here in September after school starts and gets settled. So, um, here, I'm gonna zoom back in in 2020 so we can talk about the near future first. And there's a couple of things here to note. This school bid pack two issue and bidding is happening towards the end of the summer. And so I think, um, everyone's gonna be pretty busy at that point in time. So what, what's being proposed is to take this summer and do some of the investigation work that needs to happen at the Virginia site. So that includes, um, you know, hazardous material surveys, I, I believe have been completed, Patrick, or in process. And also a site survey will be conducted, um, uh, very soon so we can get a, a good idea of what's happening there on site and give us a, the design team a, a good idea of what to plan with. And, um, the rest of that summer, it's kind of what's being called the pre-design site study and phasing phase to, um, really understand and test fit the site before, uh, rolling into schematic design, which is when we really start to explore design with, um, with the advisory team and the community and, and staff. So the schematic design, design development and construction document phases are, are words we've probably become familiar with. And they are, um, sequential, they roll into about mid-2021. And there'll be a pricing period with Cross-Anderson to estimate the design at each one of these breakpoints to make sure the project's on budget. And of course, uh, a, a review and approval process with this group. So, um, we'll kind of sort out how these, uh, junctures come together. And then the project, and I have to zoom just a bit here, then would be bid not until February of 2023. Patrick from Cross-Anderson, um, can confirm, we understand February to be an optimal bidding time. And then, uh, this red indicates the vacation of, of that, uh, building. And so the abatement and demolition can queue up, uh, and be ready for construction fall of 2023. So, again, really trying to continue the good work that's been happening and, uh, and keep developing that for Virginia Elementary School, and then construction will follow. Anything to add, um, Noel, or anyone from Cross-Anderson? Any questions?
You've got a team who came from doing your other elementary school, who still together, a design team that's pretty much intact. And you've got this process going of drawing all the information that they need to design the building the way you want it. Get all of that done, yes, this year, then we get good pricing, and we know where our budgets are all at, at that point. And then it just kind of sits on the shelf until the February before we're gonna build it. And we'll put some escalators in there for inflation. And then that way, we can hit that February bid window, which is normally the ultimate time to bid, because contractors are looking to fill their workflows for the summer. And they've kind of concluded everything they did from the previous year. So February is historically the best bidding timeframe to do that. So I know there's quite a break in between there from the time it's designed to the time that we actually bid it. But I think it does a good thing, because if the design takes a little longer, if you have some other items you want to add, that can happen. And you're not up against a, a bid time window like we had on the other two fronts. Doctor Schmidt, anything else?
No.
Any questions from the board members? Okay, moving on to item number nine, consider Rockbridge School Board member committee roster 2020. Uh, everybody did get that roster, right? See where they're on, I know with Director Sorkin, you had signed up for a few that...
I did, I was so disappointed in that. I was, um, assigned to only one, any, I requested. And I have actually a lead number, but I'm, everyone, three, everyone else, four or five. And I wanted to say that these representations, these representatives, that it's a, it's a representative of, um, like I, or R.A.E., or R.A.M., it's just a, it's not a subject that's more like budget finance and, you know. So, I don't consider those committee assignments. And, um, you do subcommittee for, and then you bring it back to the board, that's totally different. And, um, the only, what I was assigned to was budget finance, I asked for three months. No, I didn't get budget finance, I got, uh, asked me a teacher's negotiation, which I did ask for, and budget finance, and creative. I have many, many years of experience, I understand school finance very well. I know the statute, I'm great in law, beautiful school of finance. And I think that, um, I don't know, I don't know why I was kept out of it. I don't know how many others, uh, requested those committees. And then I'll say that I think budget finance should be included in the whole, because everyone should understand all the details, especially in that. But, um, I'm pretty much on one. Evelyn Gilbert has bylaws that are pretty easy to do, and they're, that's well maintained. And, um, I know the statutes backwards and forwards and, and the work being done in every school district in the state have all the same guidelines, but Virginia's industry has to do the same thing. I believe I could be an asset, I don't know why I was kept out, and that's because I know a lot about those, uh, education in general, and especially those two areas, was I kept out on. So I would like to be, um, reinstated or instated on those committees. I don't know why we're limiting it to a number of, uh, four or anything, because it's not even going to a forum about thirteen and four. And I was put on a committee that I didn't even ask for, um, which I have no interest in. And labor management, secondarily, I could, I could not, um, put on one of the two. And I, and I limited it on perfect, why it wasn't all across the board, and I thought that shouldn't only... I'm sure other people got more than one request for their committee.
Okay, any more discussion on that?
I'll move the approval.
Okay. Who's somebody that's checked for Baraboo? Or, somebody like Director Schoburg?
And I know you have a safety, like you have, you know, the conversation, or at least your safety rationale, actual rationale for these assignments and other people, that I think there is, everybody's, but there's them against mine, you know, it's just...
You can do that.
Yes.
We say, yes, it's not a forum, so, we have that sort of meeting.
Yeah, you can do that. I said, we can share that with you.
Because it's not a forum, so it's not an open meeting discussion.
Right.
I don't get you, why?
Would those two sit down and talk with you and...
Right.
... explanation?
Right.
Yeah, I, I don't care, no, no.
Yeah. Any more discussion on item nine?
Well, is this something that we are going to vote on, or is it going to be assigned, and that's what we've suggested here?
I think, well...
Vote on.
Vote on it, and then, you know, we can, we can...
If there's any new changes.
I think we can tweak it as we go along, you know? I mean, there's some meetings that, probably some things that, you know, can't make it, you know, I mean, don't want to be on...
There weren't any alternates, and I, there are times when, you know, people can't make it. And I just think it's beneficial to have an alternate for, you know, for those committees, especially, we asked me in teacher negotiations one. I mean, I, you know, I, I sat on that, um, for the majority of my time on the board, and, you know, I just think it's important to have somebody as alternate.
And it worked very well.
Rather than us calling somebody, thinking, can you sit in on that meeting for me, obviously, you know, we're involved.
And I think it worked very well for our district at the time.
I recommend the motion, so then to, um, assign me also to the budget assignment, and the three committees, that would bring me up to equal of what other board members have been assigned. I have three assignments, other board members are supporting to receive what they suggested, I mean, they suggested, have four, five committees, that would bring me up to five committees, which I think would be more...
That is half to be a separate motion.
I'm making an amendment to that motion.
You can't.
I can.
No, you can't. You got through this, that changes the nature of the motion in a second, we had a legal opinion.
It was not a different matter.
It was, but we had that in.
It was not a different matter, that was about a contract, it's not a...
It was on the same thing, I mean...
I, this is a simple motion, that was a contractual thing of, but I agreed, I called, it, um, I called M.S.D. on that, and I, I did agree with Margaret, um...
Not during the meeting.
I did agree after, and that's why I'm letting go, but this, this simple motion is not changing a plan. So, yes, we are...
First, who made the motion needs to change, or amend the motion.
There's a motion and a second.
And a motion to amend.
And the second needs to amend.
Provoke the original motion.
Nobody's expected it for more.
It doesn't, it might die till after the second, but I made it.
There, there's a motion to approve...
Have to go through the first one first.
Committee, it's the committee roster by Director Baraboo, and it's supported by Director Schoburg.
I need an amendment.
And Gail, do you support the amendment to the motion?
No, I do not.
That's fair, but I, I don't get a second to my motion, I'm dying.
That's for three times, if she doesn't give a second, she dies.
Right.
Let's do that.
Hey, can I get a second to Polly's amendment? Can I get a second? Can I get a second?
I'm afraid we're gonna get to the...
Motion, motion fails, motion fails, so we're...
We're, we're gonna get to the point where we're, we're gonna need legal representation here at every meeting, and that's very unfortunate. It's very expensive to, um, to...
So we got a motion on the table by Director Baraboo and the second by Director Schoburg to approve the committee roster. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Uh, Director Baraboo.
Aye.
Director Schoburg, the yes, Director Anderson.
Yes.
Director Mannanen. Director Tamaro.
Aye.
Director Reardon.
Yes.
Director Lotiger.
Yes.
Director Sorkin. Director Addy.
Yes.
Motion passes, eight votes.
Item number 10, consider the procedure to fill the vacant board member's seat. Yeah? So, do we have a procedure, so consider a procedure to fill that?
Statutory language is how you put it.
Right, I mean, that's what we basically do, as we did before.
When, yeah, when, when there, went back to duty, we took applications, did interviews, made the board member representation, and pulled in on it. Noel, why don't you fill us all in on, uh, the statutory procedure?
Um, I don't want to steal anything, but safety is under here. Um, safety, would you like to, uh, uh, what would you want?
You can choose to, um, you know, or you can, like, like I said, you, um, you can advertise it for seven to ten days. I, you can take applications, um, at the cost of those ten days, seven to ten days, whatever you want to, um, decide for interviews, decide for board interview, uh, whatever applies, you want to have. This, whatever you choose from the application, uh, we direct to that, whatever board you want to come in at. Um, and if that goes, you know, that's something. Um, after the resolution is approved, they do have to sit off to the board's committee name, um, once that's already, um, in the, are off.
Now, you can only give positions from January, so, um, so...
So to go with warped speeds and have someone in place by August 31st, they are seated on exactly, or a, a bulk thirty-four days for the election to replace, or to be...
Does the staff say that you must for that to remain in my zone?
I thought it was...
That you got an option not to do it?
I thought it was May, May still...
You do not have an option to leave the name, you have to, I just, we just need to tell us how you want it filled. Whether you're gonna appoint someone, or you want us to go with an application process, you can, you can tell us the process you want to go.
I think that...
I would prefer an application process, have it in a paper for seven to ten days and two board interviews with that person, and, and, we, like, three, four months.
I mean, get the application out there right now, our next regular board meeting will, I mean, interview them, like, you'd have to make the decision to appoint that two weeks of the next meeting. And then have to sit for thir, sit out for thirty days, so...
But if we get it in the papers, and, you know, soon, you know, we might be able to have some, some idea or have some interviews if you're on the fifteenth of August, it might...
And I think the recommendation from Dr. Schmidt, too, is to have that individual who does apply from the original Evelyn Gilbert district, am I correct, Noel? Yeah.
I agree.
So the consideration on the table, just of an application, just...
I'm going with making the motion that we, we advertise...
All support.
And, forget them.
For seven to ten days, followed by interviews, and then, and then...
The motion by...
I think it should be the whole board. It would be reasonable for us to do that, I think, but I see a nightmare for scheduling, what's everybody else think?
But that'd be something we should, uh, that's not a meeting, ultimately, or whatever. Okay, or, because myself personally, I think it would probably be better, not knowing how many applications we're gonna get. If you miss eight, ten of them, it's, it's a two-hundred cent for a possible, look at Peter, send me a lot, have it forward. I would think that using one of the committees, I think, first, who, that, you know, bring it down...
Bring it down to manageable interviews.
A lot of times, the interviews are of the last, the best, three recommended by the smaller committee. And then the whole board would interview the last three applicants, or would, or the last, the recommended three from the subcommittee. I think that's a good idea.
What's the personnel committee need for any maybe scale and stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
So the recommendation is to take the application, have the committee, which is Director Anderson, Personnel Committee, whittle those applications down to four or three, or tell them to...
A manageable number.
Okay, manageable number, then interview those three candidates for the position in front of the whole board.
Yeah.
Anybody agree to that?
From, uh, previous Evelyn Gilbert district.
Yeah.
I'd be very surprised if we got two, three applications, much less more than three. Or, I mean, you think about it, the seat will be a seat for half a dozen meetings.
There's been a lot of interest in the things that we've been doing, so I'm hoping that people, that options, wanna...
I hope I'm surprised.
So we have a motion by Director Lotiger, or by Director Baraboo, to consider filling the seat as, as we discussed. Any more discussion on that? Do we need to approve that?
We're approving, we're not considering, we're approving.
I mean, we're approving.
Advertise for seven to ten days.
Yeah, all right, can I get a roll call vote, please, on that?
Uh, Director Schoburg, deny, it's Director Anderson.
Aye.
Director Mannanen.
Aye.
Director Tamaro. Director Reardon.
Aye.
Director Lotiger.
Aye.
Director Sorkin. Director Addy.
Yes.
Director Baraboo.
Yes.
Motion passes, nine votes.
Okay, numbers, item number seven, recognition, recognition reports in the superintendent.
Uh, members of the board, this one is for the upstairs board, and I know you got a copy of that, and I mean...
that. I mean, that's a copy without two, all of the staff, um, the new director of the school district, the governor's orders, um, that he came out, and, um, I know we're in a situation where everybody wants answers. Everybody wants to know what is going to happen when school starts. Well, we're in a period of time where we don't have definitive answers. Because if you, uh, have watched what the governor is, he has moved his deadline several times as far as when he is going to let us know, but the rules aren't, so to speak, for opening school and all. And so, you can, when you take, so we don't know what he is going to say. However, we can pick and conclude on what he's going to say based upon what's in the document. And it's very clear that, um, he's telling us that when school comes back in session, no matter how it comes back in session, we're all wearing masks. Even kindergartners and first graders and second graders, A twelve, we are wearing masks. So, we have, um, ordered and we will have thirteen, fourteen thousand masks. We are ordering thousands face shields, too. So, that staff members, if they choose to, they can wear a face shield. They're gonna have to wear a mask. They could wear both. And if you read the order, there are certain conditions where staff members could be wearing shields instead of masks. But we are going to be wearing one of the two of them. Uh, the reason I bring it to the board's attention, we, we, and I know people want answers. But what we want to avoid is coming up with, um, solutions when you don't quite know what the problem is you're trying to fix. And that's kind of the area that we're in, with extreme class and room. We have that. We follow the principles. We've talked about how school might work. Um, and this will be a topic coming back to the board. Um, we're waiting for the governor to tell us what the rules are, so to speak. And, um, I believe the most likely scenario is going to be some type of hybrid schooling. It's very clear we are not gonna be able to put twenty to twenty-five kids in a room. It's very clear we're not gonna be able to put two hundred kids in a cafeteria. And it's very clear we are not gonna be able to put fifty kids on the school bus. There's no way we can have a regular school day if those are the things that are going to happen. So, the most likely scenario is some type of hybrid learning. Well, how does that look? One is that the principals are all talking about how that might work. And we'll talk more about it, but it would not surprise me if you don't hear something which involves kids going to school, half the class, if there's twenty kids in the class, let's just use that example. You, uh, you see a situation where this is brought to you, whether approval or not, and on Monday and Tuesday, half of those kids come to school, have a regular school day for the most part, um, although there's some things they can't do. And then Wednesday is a day where kids who need extra help, who are struggling, in some way, they need extra help. It's also could be high achieving kids. It could be anywhere. We don't know on the spectrum. And then on Thursday, Friday, the second half of the class goes to school. I can see a scenario like that coming before you. The odds are very low you're gonna see a scenario where all kids are in school five days a week. It's just not possible based upon the rules. We will have to talk about the bus, because the bus is gonna be a major issue. Because based upon spacing, you can't put, you may not even be open twenty kids in the bus. We don't have that many buses. We don't have that many drivers. We might have to figure something out. Um, we're also working, um, to go figure it out, um, and try and make it as easy and as simple for parents as possible. And any survey that anyone has done, it would not surprise me if, um, after we know what the governor says, we don't survey all of our parents. Because now we have more detailed specificity to get the warrants, get some information from our parents, so that they can help us make better decisions. And we would have to work something through so it works for parents. But in almost all the surveys that have been done on parents, even on a national level, one thing that comes through a lot of clearance is consistency. Parents do not want something where it's every day or every other day, every Thursday, or Monday and Wednesday on the first and Thursday. Don't want that. They want some type of regular consistency, so they can babysit, engage their, uh, because this is gonna be an issue for some of our, a lot of our families. So, we have to be looking at it then. So, if some, I'll make any questions that, um, um, looks like we'd answer that right then. We are waiting for August first for the governor to tell us what the rules are. Um, the principals are already thinking about how this might work in the structural thing that we will go meet again. Um, this we, we very well could survey and we probably will survey our parents to find out what they are thinking and what will work for them once we know what the rules are. And then we'll get that information back. Uh, but it would not surprise me to suspect some type of hybrid. Example, I just told you, that may not be the day that actually works. Maybe it's some other type of combination. We can work with parents to see which one works better, combination, whatever the rotation is. Um, and in addition to that, we'll have to figure out a system, because some parents, no matter what the governor says, are probably not gonna send their kids to school. They're not, because they're worried about COVID. And so, we will have, need to have some plans for distance learning, some way. So, we'll have to have a system for those kids' families if they wanted to do that and choose that option. We have an option for them, and that they can cover, um, and so we can take care of them. So, we need to have systems and staff available for them. And this is no surprise to you. Um, staff are worried. Staff are concerned. We did have a meeting with all the teachers, um, who wanted to, was a voluntary meeting. They all came in, made a party, they were broken into small groups. We listened to all of their concerns, all of their suggestions, um, and we talked about those. Um, so we know what the teachers are thinking. They're the primary caregivers of this, of their concern about how we might be delivering, um, that. Not all, not everyone, um, that, if you know, the concerns go all the way from, I'm not worried, to I'm very worried. We need to recognize that. So, I'll stop now, and then if any board member has any questions about this, I'll take any questions off the top of.
I've got to. Um, so, you said about having, possibly doing surveys. Would you possibly look at asking parents if they would transport or if they're willing to transport?
Yes, because if parents are willing to transport, that would actually help us out quite a bit, um, on the bus and part of it. So, yeah.
Okay. And then, like, sanitize, you know, sanitizing after the, like, if it was, you know, half, half the grades, Monday, Tuesday, and then the other half of the grades, Thursday and Friday, is there, like, a sanit- I think, you know, sanitizing day, or how that be that working?
And that partly, that's why we're actually thinking, what I'm saying, would be a lighter day, if fewer kids are developing. That way, the custodians would have more time. The teachers have the parents who else is working to do some of that super cleaning. We, we're gonna need some kind of a break between when kids come in and then do group come in.
And I know, you know, even first of my own perspective, but, um, specialists, how is, how is that gonna work? So, my understanding is they're, they're not going to be able to have gym class in the gym, um, or music in the music room. So, is, are there, like, are those teachers involved in some of the planning? I mean, are they coming up with some ideas on how to, how to do that?
Yeah. So, the specialists are an issue, whether it's in the high school or in the elementary. So, the specialists could very well be ones involved more in the distance learning end of it, managing that and moving that process forward. Um, and so, we will also have to figure out ways for, like, in the elementary class, there's no way you can have first graders sit on the floor all day long, six hours a day. It is not quite the work at all. So, we'll have to figure out a way to set that for the kids still get their movement and their vibe, because the gym is still there. Cafeteria, still, there's still bigger areas that they could do some things in. Um, and we'll have to figure it out. The specialists, we will have to think and use them a little bit differently. Yeah.
And then, last thing, is athletic thing, what the governor announces on August first, or I thought it was Wednesday, but, um, on August first, is that also going to be a decision that's going to be made in both, both courts?
Welcome to the great industry. We don't know. However, the Minnesota High School League has told us they're going to make some recommendations, I think, on the fifth of August. And they're taking the stance, because they will know what the governor's suggesting, and they're gonna make their suggestion. Um, but there is no way we're going to be able to do sport as normal, based upon what we're hearing from the healthcare is, no matter how desperately we want it to be a normal school year. So, I would not be surprised if we don't get something coming, like, uh, some sports, some, I wouldn't surprise if some sports get split. Um, maybe, and I don't know if this really will happen, but maybe football goes to the spring and baseball goes to the fall. Because football, there's a lot more contact, there's a lot more heavy breathing. How do you tackle somebody you're not breathing on? It's, it's impossible. Um, whereas baseball, there's a lot less contact. Maybe you can play baseball better under the current conditions. So, it wouldn't surprise if something like that doesn't happen. That would kind of make a little bit of sense, but the whole state would have to do it. So, that's why the Minnesota High School League, they, or maybe they don't. Maybe they say it's just not even possible. So, on the athletic end, I'm expecting there to be some rules, and you can read it what the governor says. If you read closely in there, it's very clearly he's talking about how our activities go. He's basically, they're basically saying, the honor of the day, when kids are all cuddling up, even in cross-country, there's not gonna be ten kids cuddling up across country with no mask. Can't happen. And you can't do it. So, but you can do cross-country, that's, it's a different sport. You can start it in waves, you know, so there's less contact. It's different. So, cross-country is a sport that I can see that one going, um, in the fall. Uh, what they do with some of the other ones, I'm not sure.
I just know that I've heard, you know, some, some talk about if there is ball sports, that there may not be spectators along the launch, and if that were the case, is there, do you have opportunities to live stream any of that stuff?
Yeah. We'll be able to do all of that stuff. And then, uh, just, you know, I asked Josh and Joe, so I said, come on, do you have any inside information on what might happen? They're telling me, no, we don't know. Just kind of waiting other than rumors, you know, and possibilities that might. But, um, we will be able to do streaming and, uh, which I think of other things. Um, we will not be able to attack people with a stand, or pass that people sitting far enough apart during all of the defense. And we'll be able to figure that out. If you come to join us, uh, the, um, uh, crowd raising ceremony next week, and we hope we do. Um, Stacy is so excited, um, with lots of events, uh, just can't sell my ass. Um, we're gonna do something like put dots on the ground with washable, so that people are fixed to the park, um, as we require. And that's just the way we need, um, for a while. So, we have to get around to that. Thank you.
Any other questions, Noel? All right, excellent.
Sure. I have one thing on, which I should have, but the Roosevelt Finals up. And Pat actually looked at me and asked if I had something else. One thing we will have to figure out, uh, the Roosevelt, um, is what do we do with the Roosevelt here? That building is being reconstructed. We will get to that. We'll have to talk about it. Um, but from the safety point of view, and from a money point of view, those two, we can move the Roosevelt kids somewhere else. Uh, that building is being rebuilt. It's gonna be safer, and you're probably gonna spend, like, oh, we will spend less money on construction, because they, they, they won't have to worry about getting around four or five hundred kids. So, just put that in the back of your head somewhere. We will have to talk about that here for this year. We will have to broach that.
I think at one of our meetings, we did discuss that.
Right.
Because they don't want to, yeah, that they would either go to the Evelyn Gilbert camp, or Evelyn Campus, or they'd go to the Gilbert Campus, because they didn't want nobody down there on site while the construction was going on. That was what, probably, I'm.
Crowd understand the point of you, they don't want anybody.
Nothing. Okay, uh, item number eight, mandatory policies for the district, the third and final reading. As you can see on your sheet, it's one through forty-seven, or policy number one oh two through nine oh three. Uh, I would probably give some thoughtful consideration to the, to the comments we had from, uh, Mary Spang to look into, uh, number twenty-three, which would be five sixteen.
Five sixteen.
Five sixteen, to give that some consideration, to include all medicine over the counter and like that.
I would move for final approval of all policies listed, with the exception of five sixteen, and to have our policy committees reevaluate the wording on that particular policy.
Support by Director Baraboo, support by Reardon. Any discussion on that?
I would like to do a lot of policy five thirty-one. I believe it's, I don't think that's approved, but I believe it's there's a budget in the region. We said at least once a week. I would like to do that. They, I know Evelyn Gilbert began our policy that we said every day. I would like to make that change.
So, the recommendation, how is it, how is the policy written right now, to say that it's recited once a week? It's, it's, so it's stated one day a week or once a week? Huh?
We can, we can test it out.
I mean, one, I mean, once a day or, wait, excuse me, once a day, once a day or once a week?
At least once a week.
At least once a week?
Do it every day if you wanted to. That doesn't limit it to only once a week.
So. Okay, so, let me just get this straight. Policy number five thirty-one states that it would be recited once a week? She wants it every day. Well. And right now, the policy says. Once a week.
At least once.
At least once.
Right, so.
That doesn't.
All over the board, because you want to, we, we, our policy, you know, we're, it's not, it's a single day.
So, you would, you prefer daily? I mean, I would, I would support that.
But that policy would include that in every day, too, as well. It just says at least once a week. Doesn't say only once a week.
Thanks to our, our drinks. Come on, Gail. Come on, Gail. Okay, we got a motion by Director Baraboo, support by Director Reardon, with, with the exception of five thirteen, to include all medicines, or to be look into it.
Five sixteen.
Five sixteen, and then five thirty-one, the pledge of allegiance to, to be recited daily. Do you consider a friendly amendment to your motion?
Um, it's not, it's a motion to approve. You'd have to start all over again with three readings, and then sue, sue the amended policy.
And so, what we can do is go send this to the policy committee. Yeah, okay.
All right. That's fine. I would, I would agree to that.
Okay, so we will send this, five thirty-one and five sixteen to the policy committee for the recommendation. Can't, can't, all right.
You can't amend that way.
We have to start over with the first reading, and with all, that's exactly what will happen.
So when the policy committee means we will amend, rearrange it that way, and then the board will approve with a new wording, and then we will put it in first reading, and that's all you do.
And then start the readings all over as one, like second reading with the changes. Okay, so I would just make the suggestion, if there's anything in here, on all these policies from one oh two to nine oh three, because I don't want to get into having a second reading and all of a sudden, now we're changing policy five twenty-two, now we're back to another first reading again.
Yeah, we're on the final right now, now we're going to...
Yeah, I would, I would just suggest that we just, in the policy committee, make those changes there instead of here.
Right.
Okay, that way we can have our final readings, and then go on and, yeah, and read, and then, eh, yep. I get a, okay, so, got a...
We amended to pull out five, five, whatever that number was, she wanted out.
So.
Yeah.
So we got, so we have an amendment to, for these policies. Can I, can I get a roll call vote?
I don't know what we're voting on.
No, it's two amendments.
I, I heard of all kids.
Yeah.
I, I heard a second, I heard someone accept the friendly amendment.
No, she didn't, I mean amendment, and she had been, uh, seconded my amendment. But now we vote on the amendment.
Let's vote on the amendment right now. I get a roll call?
What is the amendment?
We, we, to pull out five thirty-one and five sixteen.
Yes.
No, no, the amendment is five thirty-one.
To say the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance every day.
Okay, yeah, five sixteen was third, you're right.
Can I get a roll call vote, please?
What I understand was, I, I hear a lot of different understandings of what we're voting on.
Yeah.
And Polly, she made the motion, I seconded. Whatever anybody else says doesn't really matter right now, because she made the motion and I seconded.
But we need to know what her motion was before we vote on it.
Motion was, and correct me if I'm wrong, Polly.
It was, it was an amendment to a motion that was, that she seconded.
The amendment is that we do the pledge of allegiance every day.
The original motion was to approve all except five sixteen, which is the medication, and that it would go to the policy committee for a further review. Now, you can, I would amend to pull out five thirty-one as well, and if somebody wants to second that, fine. And then we vote those two separately.
You can't change it, because we already have a motion seconded, we have to vote on this motion.
No, we, our motion is a second. You made an amendment.
Matt, you know, just because you say it, you're not right, and, uh, we have a procedure, a two-month degree of procedure, I know an attorney will, we will, let's table that one, and we'll get, we'll get a legal opinion, but simple, Matt.
You know, we should have to vote to a legal opinion every time we're...
Right.
I, I agree with you.
Conference of some, I agree.
I, I agree. I call a question.
You can't just call a question, and then vote. One person can't call a question.
My understanding was Gilney's motion, she accepted a friendly amendment, because that's what I heard, in this discussion. And then Paul, and then Tim supported Polly's amendment, so...
Gil accepted that.
I, that's what I heard Gil say, after Matt asked Gil.
I said, I agreed to pull out five thirty-one, as well as five sixteen. Who seconded? Somebody did something seconded.
I didn't ask for five thirty-one to be pulled out, I only asked for that policy.
If you want to change it, it has to be pulled out, and then it has to have three readings. That's, I wouldn't, I've been on a policy committee for three and a half years. That's the perspective.
Can I get a roll call vote for the amendment?
Which amendment?
Polly's is what they're asking for.
Polly's.
You got to vote on mine first.
No, we don't, we vote on the amendment first.
All right, all right, whatever.
Again, it's going to cost the district a whole lot of money, because we're going to need a attorney.
We don't need an attorney, call MSDA for a day. They give, they give workshops, we all have this in our school, but, school board training.
So, so we delay, are we going to have MSDA up on the screen?
No, just make a simple phone call to verify. I'm saying, I'm saying that people don't understand how to do a simple amendment. I do, and so do Tim. Okay.
All right. Hey, board, let's vote on her motion, please. The motion to approve, to approve her, okay.
It would be the amended motion.
Yeah.
Except that policy five thirty-one, that's a little change.
Yeah.
So this is the first reading, in other words.
Yep.
Count to pull out five sixteen.
Can I get a roll call vote, please?
If, if something's amendment.
Here's the vote.
Roll call.
Director Anderson.
Of state.
Director Madison.
No.
Director Peral.
Yes.
Director Reardon.
Yes.
Director Lager. Uh, Director Sorkin. Director Addy.
No.
Uh, Director Baraboo.
I'm going to vote no.
And Director Shoberg abstains, because I didn't understand what we were voting. Uh, motion fails three, two, four, two.
Okay, so now we'll go back to the original motion, is to approve the policies. To approve the policies.
Less five sixteen.
Yeah, less five sixteen and five thirty-one, right?
Yep. Again, I heard Gil make a friendly amendment, based on what Polly had said. It's up to Gil whether or not she wants to do that, she was the one that made the original motion.
My amended motion was to withdraw both of those numbers.
Yeah.
And I don't know who seconded it.
So it was, who made the second to the withdrawal?
I...
I think it was.
Tom Ederson.
Are you agreeable to the, to the...
I'm agreeable. I agree, it's all good, how are I?
Ready for the vote?
Yes, go.
Uh, Director Madison.
Aye.
Director Peral.
Aye.
Director Reardon.
Aye.
Director Lager.
Aye.
Director Sorkin. Director Addy.
Yes.
Director Baraboo.
Aye.
Director Shoberg is aye, motion passed as eight to one.
Yeah, so, um...
Where do you get the votes?
Yeah, where you go. Pretty good.
Oh, did I forget, I'm sorry, Director Anderson, when I get to the bottom, I have to pass that one back to the top. Thank you.
Okay, so we done with that now, board?
No, we're moving on.
Moving on. Uh, item two, additional policies, the third and final reading of the Code of Ethics. Why wasn't that like in, uh...
It was always separate.
I'll, I'll move.
Support.
Yeah, well...
Okay, item number two, uh, I, quote, number two oh nine, Code of Ethics, is there any discussion on that? Let's hopefully follow it. None being had, I get a roll call vote, please, to approve by the...
Director Peral.
Aye.
Director Reardon.
Yep.
Director Lager.
Yes.
Director Sorkin. Director Addy.
Yes.
Director Baraboo.
Yes.
Director Shoberg, yes. Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Madison?
Yes.
Motion passed in the ninth row.
Item nine, board number topics, is there any board members that would like to speak to anything about school-related issues and business? Anybody, any discussion? Number nine, discussion? None being had. Item ten, unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business that the board needs to discuss? Any discussion? None being had. Item eleven, public comment regarding the meeting agenda. Is there anybody in the, in the public here that would like to speak in anything regarding the tonight's agenda? The two-minute talk time. Anybody here? Okay, none being had. Uh, item number twelve, meeting announcement, the next Rockford School Board Meeting will be held on Monday, August tenth, twenty twenty, at six P M. Is there, the announcement of the, the, uh, grand, not grand opening, the groundbreaking ceremony is?
August fifth at ten A M.
August fifth at ten A M., here, rain or shine, correct? Masks will be provided for those who do not have them? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all righty. Uh, item number, any, any other meeting announcement? Anybody have?
Yes, Mr. Chair, number four, if you show up, you get your own individual wrapped Rockbridge cookies. So, we're not the big guy here. Your own Wolverine cookies, if you show up.
All right, a cookie? Wait a second, if it's green, I'm not...
Absolutely, the best, right?
If you're going to get it in the tunnel, or...
When you say like, big cookie, I mean, it'd be disappointing if you showed up and it was something like small.
It's really tough to eat a green cookie.
Yeah. Okay, no other meeting announcements for anybody? Item number thirteen, which is adjournment.
All right, board.
All right, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.